Good morning and welcome to the Paul County Board of Commissioners' August 23rd, 2016 Work Session. Welcome all of our invited guests and elected officials. I see your chair, Gary Gildes.
Prime Minister, is he in my ass in the room?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm standing up. If I stand up, I'm too often.
You and that must call each other by what we're today. District Attorney, thank you very much for being here. Post Four Commissioner Wayne Kirby, thank you for being here. Former Post Four. Martin, can you bring the... This morning for our pledge, we have, in our invitation, we have Tony Crow, Commissioner, Post Four. Would you stand with me if you're anxious?
Bow with me, pray with me. Father, we bow before you this morning, thankful for another day of life. We thank the Father for the privilege of serving our county. Father, I pray for all the members of this board, God, you give them wisdom. Father, we pray you should give those who send us from a receptive heart to the things we might do and say. Father, we count on you for everything, and we're going to trust you today with everything that's done. At the end of the day, we're going to stop and say thank you, as in your name we pray. Amen.
I want these to be the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes, August 9, 2016, work session minutes, and August 9, 2016, military rate public hearing minutes, and the August 9, 2016, board meeting minutes are available for your review. I'd like to make an announcement, there's no executive session, it was required, and that's been canceled. The Board of Commissioners would also like to remind you that our regular meeting previously scheduled for September 13th at 2:00 will now be postponed to 7:00, the same day that Water, Sewer Revenue Bonds go on sale, and so they will need to make preparation, and they have that evening for us to expect. Sheriff Gildes, if you come forward, we have Lamar Hunt 13th Annual Memorial Ride set up for Saturday, September 24th, 2016. You always sort of head this up for us here.
I do, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to let you know that this 13th Annual Ride will meet at the community center across from the jail. Registration starts at 8:30, keep your hands up until 10 o'clock, we're going to leave, we'll make the circle, we'll probably stay mostly in Paul County, we'll end at Park and Garden, and there we'll have raffles and dinner, and have a lot of fun, and get us $35, or you buy $15 for an extra passenger, and all the money goes to the Georgia Sheriff He comes. Yeah, there's flyers to back the room, anybody wants one, you can back us a ride, but you can be welcome, it'll be a Sheriff's 40 rides. Try to keep it safe as possible, have some fun. Thank you.
While we're talking about motorcycles, you got a little bit better news on Robbie Dodson?
Yep, they took him off the ventilator completely, and they're looking this week to try to do a smaller trade, looking for a long-term rehab center to get in. Got a long road in front of you. Everybody praise, you'll continue to pray for him and the Warner's family. We really appreciate it, it's a thank to a bunch of us greatly, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff. The Board Commissioner would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Tony Cosby with the Paul County Fire Department. Chief, if you'll come forward, and if you'll come forward, and anybody that you'd like to have stand with you up here. I'm going to read this proclamation, and I'm going to have you say a few words. National...
I'm sorry, that's the wrong thing.
You're the one, you better.
Good morning, Harry Dodd. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Sergeant Troy Cosby of Public Safety Appreciation Award. If you present to all our employees, and we appreciate you all doing that. Troy began his career as a volunteer firefighter in August of 1993. He volunteered his time in the Bonnall County Fire Department, and sacrificed all his time with his family to volunteer. And then in 1996, when I got hired, me and him came on about the same time, in October of 96, and he started out his career firefighter, and worked on the same shift home, and he's been the ultimate professional ever since I've worked with him. Always had a good attitude, and always gave the best to patient care, and does a fantastic job on the fire scene. In September 2006, Troy was promoted to Sergeant in a fire station, those were the first sergeants that we had, that we came up with, and then Troy was right in that group, and he'd make a fantastic sergeant, and during that time, he has supervised and trained many personnel, and mentored a lot of employees, and done a fantastic job of that as well. Since then, he's excelled even further, and he holds 10 different certifications. He holds a national professional qualification as a hazmat technician, an aircraft firefighter, NPQ-1 firefighter, 1 and 2, he's a CPR instructor, and he's taught numerous of our employees and citizens. I guess it's been over 15 years he's been a CPR instructor, there's no telling how many he's taught in that. He's also a fire safety educator, so he's stayed really busy over the years getting all these certifications. In May of this year, he was moved to the Training Division as a sergeant, and he's going to hit the ground running there, and he's done a fantastic job there. We've developed new classes for station training, he's going to be attending fire instructor schools, but he just stays busy. He's an old man like me, and he just stays right in there and keeps training. And we're very proud of Troy, he has an enormous wealth of knowledge that he passes on, he's not afraid to let people know what he knows, and this department wouldn't be where he is today without Troy's input, and we appreciate you so much, everything he does for the citizens of Paul County and our fire department. Thank you, Troy.
We all stand with you. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the National Surgical Technologist Week Proclamation to Cole Bates, CST Certified Surgical Technologist. Would you come forward? We'll save this proclamation for another... No invited guests, good awards, discuss action to approve the purchase of an aerial platform truck to Fireline Incorporated in the amount of $1,40,863. Down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you'll recall, Chief Peltre informed you a couple of weeks ago that he had received a grant for a ladder truck, and that grant federal portion was $909,901. So on July 1st, we advertised for using the cooperative program that is very similar to the state contract, but we can't, we have to receive delivery of this truck fairly quickly, so it's kind of limited to the vendors that can participate. However, through this cooperative contract, we have five vendors participate, they basically provided us with nine different options for purchase that could be delivered within the next year, and a team was put together to evaluate each proposal based on the capabilities, delivery time, warranty, design and configuration, equipment, proximity to service, and price, and they have recommended award to Fireline Incorporated for a 100-foot ladder truck in the amount of $1,40,863. And this will be a federal grant in the amount of $909,901, and our portion $1,872.
Are you aware of the spend on it?
That's right.
Any questions? Thanks for the picture of the truck, Sheriff. Number two, discuss action to award to the low bidder, CW Matthews, contract in the amount of $2,493,775.20 for the 2016 asphalt project contract one to resurface 11.49 miles of Ridge Road, Mead Mitchell Road, and Bob Hunt Road located in Post Two and Three. Tap into the address code.
Okay. A few weeks ago, the O.T.s, well, the O.T.s have been very, very busy trying to put all these roads together, this package. We received local funding by the state, it's called LMEC funding, and this year was $1,257,000 and some change that is applied towards this, and we had to make a match, and we tried to extend to get as many miles as we can. So this was divided into four sections, four different contracts to try to increase competitiveness. However, these are being awarded all to CW Matthews, and this first one was the low bid, the recommended award low bid, CW Matthews in the amount of $2,493,775.20, and it is being paid for with the LMEC, the $1,257,000, as well as the balance that is lost.
Do you want to add anything to that?
So all at one time? Okay.
Do you want me to read the rest of them?
If you don't mind.
Number three, discuss action to award the low bidder, CW Matthews, contract in the amount of $2,437,779.84 for the 2016 asphalt project contract to resurface 9.83 miles of Dass Bridge Road and High Show Road located in Post Four. Number four, discuss action to award the low bidder, CW Matthews, contract in the amount of $1,456,763.10 for the 2016 asphalt project contract three to resurface 6.41 miles on Hall-Aitland Road, Co-Lake Road, Park Road, and Holland Road located in Post One and Two. Number five, discuss action to award the low bidder, CW Matthews, contract incorporated in the amount of $1,486,348.68 for the 2016 asphalt project contract number four to resurface 7.867 miles on various subdivision streets located in Post One, Two, and Four.
Okay, so in, back to contract one, those bids ranged from the $2,400,000 up to $3.2 million, so that would be an idea of the savings or the values that contract two is awarded in low bid, $2,337,779.84, and those bids ranged up to $315,831.55. And that project is being paid for with $2 million that's lost and $337,000 general fund dollars. Asphalt project three, it had rebidders with low bid, $1,456,763.10, those bids ranged at $1,684,000. And asphalt project three, the funding is $763 from the lost and $693 from general fund. And contract four actually had more participation, we had five participants with a low bid in $1,463.48, and those bids ranged up to $2,535,948.6. And it is also being, contract four is primarily with general fund, as well as we've collected bonds from developments that we'll be doing some research in the fall, as well as some project inquiries from these.
We'll talk about either of those, if you can.
Just a couple of things I'd like to add. This contract is more typical of what we like to put out each year. We've been struggling to put out work because of the funding situation we've been in. This is 35 miles in one contract, which is nice. We didn't quite do that, I can't think, except for the subdivisions we bonded, we haven't done a contract this twisted in quite a while. But that's good. The other thing we did to try to strategize on getting the best price was to break it up into four sections, hoping that there would be more interest from some of the smaller or mid-sized contractors that could go after the work. Ultimately, CW Matthews, which is the one or the number two contractor in the state, did win all the bids, but we think they went after it harder. We think this came in about 20% below what we're expecting, based on our earlier estimates, and the price is just looking at asphalt lay-down price from the last contract a year ago versus now, was running 15% less. A lot of that is to do with the oil price, the liquid that goes into the asphalt is quite a bit cheaper right now. Also, the other thing we did to strategize on getting better prices was to extend the contract out through next spring. If we had typically put out a contract in May or June as we wrapped up fiscal year, tried to complete it by October, it puts a lot of pressure on doing this many miles in one season. We heard back, and we're G.O.P. having a lot of work right now, we heard back that contracts were very busy, so we extended the price, or excuse me, extended the timeframe, and I think we got a lot better bids because of that. So we're happy to recommend approval of this in front of you. We've broken this down, it's a combination of wrapping up FY16, paying budgets, as well as beginning, or taking most of the FY17 budgeted funds that we've got coming before you. Any questions?
Any questions, the captain, the horse, when will these go out if they're approved this evening?
We are allowing all the way until, I think, May 31st for completion. Well, as soon as we get the contracts executed, they can start work as soon as 60 days. I don't anticipate they will do a lot of work this season. In the fall, they might do some patches if they have availability, they might even do some work during the winter on some of the deeper repairs that are not restricted by weather, as far as the temperature. We can't pay typically below 40 degrees unless we're putting in two or three inches of asphalt. So you'll see sporadic work, I think, leading to spring, and then they will go hard at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. No reports from committees in the department voted participation on the agenda either, or we have the District Attorney Dick Donovan, 1359, Mayor Gordon, come back to the bench.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman of Commissioners, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Pollard. My disclaimer is that I'm here to speak today not as the District Attorney of the Paulian Judicial Circuit, 75% of the budget for which is divided by the taxpayer of the Paul County, by the three Mississippi Commissioners, but rather as one of those taxpayers, called Dick Donovan, Mayor Gordon, and I. Had someone come up to me, when I was growing up on the southwest side of Atlanta, and said to me, you know, you're going to spend the majority of your life in Paul County, Georgia, I would have looked out and asked him two questions. First of all, where's Paul County? And then I would have said, why would I do that? But as you know, your treasure's where your heart is, and my heart is Teresa. And Teresa's family's been here forever, Clontes, Watsons, Waltons, the Hills, some of them have been here since dirt was invented and claimed to have been in on the invention along with the Oscars. So 36 years ago, this is where we built our family home, this is where we raised our family, I made our life, and I've made my career. At the last meeting of the board we missed was in July, a lady came up and spoke to the budget issue and said that she felt like an increase in the budget was not a bad thing, and she would support it because she understood the need for it. And frankly, I'm just here to echo that sentence. I'm not rich, I'm government-employed, like a lot of people here, and I understand the strain that extra taxes or the idea that extra spending by the government brings people to mind. I understand that even a small increase in the military would be a strain for some people, but I see it not as something that we ought to reject automatically, but something we ought to embrace if we have to, because increased spending is not in and of itself an evil thing. And I support whatever will help us to progress and grow as a taxpayer, and somebody who lives in this county and looks for the welfare in this county. I support whatever we have to do to make this, continue to make this, there are ways to live. And I'm going to go sideways here and say personally to Chairman Lawson, that I admire what you've done for the last almost eight years. It's been an extremely difficult economic time in this country and in this county. The building boom, collapse, and the things that have happened economically, you have steered this county very well through that very difficult time. We've got better infrastructure, we've got new facilities, we have parks, the problem of the reservoir, and I appreciate what you've done, thank you very much. My budget's already in place, you can't do a thing for me. You'll be out of here by the time I get another budget, so I'm saying this sincerely, I appreciate what you've done. But increased spending as part of the wealth out of budget is not, again, in and of itself an evil thing, nor should a tax increase or extra expenses or extra spending ever be seen as a failure. I think responsible citizens know that, and I think responsible citizens always will support what's best for Paul County, as long as the extra expense, the extra money that's generated is being spent in a sensible way, my responsibility. So when you get to the budget issue this morning, I would tell you that this citizen supports a large budget, and I hope you will give it proper consideration. You don't mind, I'm going to go back to the jury trial, so I'm going to...
You want to begin, correct.
All I'm sure that hopes of is the 1993 rape case that's not published yet.
Good luck. Travis Bowright to 41 Cedarstown, Pat on the bench.
Good morning, I'm Travis, I'm the President of the Paul County Fire Department. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I just want to take this time on behalf of my members and myself to thank Chief Peltre and his leadership team. Appreciate Chief Peltre putting in the request to the board for the raise. I think this is a huge step in helping our retention problem. We have a lot of experienced firefighters in Paul, been here 20 years career, 25 volunteers, so I definitely have a passion for Paul County, and a lot of firemen in the county do, that's what makes this, a lot of guys in here, been in same time, a lot of us started together. We've seen a lot of changes, a lot of positive changes. It was probably 2008, correction, 2007, I was in a fire station by myself, now I'm in a fire station with three to four guys. So, you know, we definitely have come a long way. Like I said, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Chief Peltre and his leadership team, and I want to thank the board, the Board of Commissioners for all y'all's hard work, and I appreciate y'all's consideration on Chief Peltre's request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Approved acceptance of the Paulian Street for perpetual care maintenance. Lost Creek Unit C1, Lost Creek Boulevard, Paulin Oak Drive. Lost Creek Unit D, Post Four, Paulin Oak Drive, Paulin Oak Trail. Lost Creek Unit E1, Post Four, Pinnacle Point Four. Lost Creek Unit E2, Post Four, Lost Creek Club Drive. Rivers End Way, Rivers End Court. Seven Hills Unit 1, Post Four, Vent Leaf Drive. Sugar Maple Lane, Red Cedar Way. Seven Hills Unit N2, Post Four, Double Branches Lane, Amberly Court. Starry Night Way, Croftmore Court, Gonya Way. Seven Hills Unit N3, Post Four, Double Branches Lane, Angel Oak Trail. Seven Hills Unit N4, Post Four, Billwind Lane, Arkwood Court. Alberberry Court, Calming Water Trail. Seven Hills Unit E, Post Four, Teaberry Trail. Metal Arc Way, Double Branches Lane, Red Hawk Flash. Seven Hills Unit 1, Post Four, Ivy Hall Lane, Spanish Oak Way, Mayflower Court, Wagon Oak Trail. Seven Hills Unit L, Post Four, Sugar Mist Drive. Grace Harbor Court, Grace Harbor Lane. Seven Hills Unit M1, Post Four, Billstone Lane. Seven Hills Unit M1, Post Four, Vale Billwind Lane, Featherstone Place, Buttonwood Place. Seven Hills Unit F1, Post Four, Double Branches Lane, Gray Dove Way. Seven Hills Unit F2, Post Four, Ivy Hall Lane, Lanternia Court, now Pragnum Lane, Jasmine Way. Would you like to move any of these to regular session? The following options listed surplus and put at their disposal to the option of trade. Fleet Maintenance Truck Unit 301, 1994, F-150, serial number. Water Department Truck Unit 213, 2005, Ford F-150, serial number. Water Department Truck Unit 218, 1998, Ford F-150, serial number. Water Department Truck Unit 253, 2002, Ford F-150, serial number. Water Department Truck Unit 276, 2001, Ford F-150, serial number. Water Department Truck Unit 289, 2004, Ford F-150, serial number. Water Department Truck Unit 717, 2006, Ford F-150, serial number. Community Development Truck Unit 414, 2004, Ford. Landfield Truck Unit 391, 1995, Ford 9,000, serial number. Sheriff Car Number 4, 1998, Ford Crown Vic, serial number. And Sheriff Car Unit S76, 1998, Ford Crown Vic, with a serial number. Would you like to move any of these items to regular section? Hearing done, we'll keep that on the consent agenda. Old Business, discuss action to approve the fiscal year 2017 budget, which was tabled on August 9, 2016, from the Board of Commissioners, to be adopted.
Okay, as you know, we issued two options for budget, and those two options still exist. Since the last meeting, I have gone back through the revenues and tried to look to see where we might have some additional revenues. I have taken a little bit less conservative approach, and I'll explain that in due diligence. So the current revenues that I have listed for, or as I have informed you earlier, each one of you, I have our revenue projections by a million dollars. However, those are in the form of, I'm going to give you some examples to demonstrate how I've taken out some of the conservative, sorry, conservatism. For our current yearly taxes, we generally budget those on 97%. We collect a little bit more than 97%, over time, we will collect 100%, but we might not collect 100% in fiscal year 2017. However, if you're going to have a lower, since you rolled military back, you've got some that, it's a little more optimism there, that those will be paid at a faster rate. that, it's a little more optimism there, that those will be paid at a faster rate. So I've increased that from 97% to 98%. That allowed $233,200. Another area is in the local option sales tax. So, I'm gonna give you some history and then tell you what, where I budgeted this time. In 2013, we had $12.3 million local option sales tax. In 2014, we had $12,000, almost $1,000, $12.1 million in '14 for local option sales tax. In 2015, we had $12.7 million for local option sales tax. So our budget for 2016 was $12.7 million. We've actually received $12.9 million in 2016 for local option sales tax. So, usually I'm a little hesitant to jump to the high, I try to stay somewhere in between. In this case, I didn't do that. I went to with $12.9, assuming that people are still running shop calling and you're gonna collect the same thing you did last year. However, in conce of the 2013, 2014, we had somewhat of a decline. So it's possible, not likely, it's possible. That decline is primarily due to the Cadillac law tax that gave an exemption for vehicles. So that's more or less what that decline was. So that, I went through everywhere and it went more towards the high numbers than my original expectations, and I've gotten to $1 million. If those revenues don't make it, you're gonna have to come back and amend your budget to reduce it at the time, or you will have to use fund balance for that amount of money. I don't think it's likely, I think we're still pretty confident that that's what we'll be at, but it's a little bit riskier than original projections. So, I feel it's my responsibility to tell them and the public. So if, since we did go with the military of 6.1, there has been some expressed interest in keeping some of the items, most of the items that were in the option two budget, which include the contract administration position, some telephone equipment for information technology that is going to be updated in October of this year, without a main, it's not gonna be maintained any longer. Pro-Bank Court had part-time to full-time. Sheriff in detention had some adjustments for non-ship and on-call, as well as additional positions. Marshall had an additional position, community development, which was one of the hardest hit and it's coming back fairly quickly. That is another place that you could increase your needs within permits. And Ann and I are working to try to bring you a fee schedule that will increase those fees and provide this additional revenue. And so there are also positions there. I went through and I added up according to the past, what we've done, is we used fund balance for capital improvements. So I totaled all of the fund balance amount. One being the $1.2 million that is being, was LMIC, which was received in December 15. But you're not gonna spend it until we do this project that is approved today. So that's $1,057,000 of fund balance that we're going to use. If I add the additional capital items that were in the option two budget, I have about $800,000. So, using that idea of that approach, you can use about $2 million in fund balance. So, with that, that gives you an additional $3 million from the original budget that I had provided to DOT. We'll have to have an increase because the $1.2 million was received for DOT and it will be allocated to DOT. So with that, if any of you have any other changes that you would like, if you don't want to use fund balance, or if you want to take that approach, that's some direction that I need to leave today if you want to have a third budget. Ready to move on to the budget.
I appreciate it, having your work set up here two weeks ago. We've set up here for the last couple of months and worked on the budget, talking about bill rates and keep them the same, rolling back from 6.528 to 6.5, we'll roll back from 6.528 to 6.118. And because of a lot of reasons which were pretty neat, if you had the opportunity to be a part of it two weeks ago today, some pretty neat things as far as I'm concerned that kind of happened along the way, that that is very interesting to me. But in the name of unity, we voted for the 6.118 bill rate that the chairman proposed. I made a motion that day to table the budget for two weeks. I made a commitment and a promise to the employees that we would work on that budget. And I know just like at home, you can't make everybody happy. Whether that's employees, or citizens, or taxpayers, or whoever you want to call them. I know we can't make everybody happy, and we all have our ideas of what we'd do best for our community. I've always taken my job serious. In the last two weeks, I've taken it really serious. And I've seen, talked to a lot of employees, a lot of department heads, and I think we're at a critical time in a lot of ways in our county. And I committed that I would work on it, and I started that Tuesday right after that meeting. Spent quite a bit of time, I've talked to, like I said, employees, talked to department heads, I've talked to tabists, way too much. Talked to post commissioners, spent a lot of time, talked to the chairman this morning. Wish we'd had a little bit more time to talk, but I talked to the chairman this morning. And sometimes we're voted in, we're voted in to make decisions for the county. And I think we have a responsibility by taking care of our employees, and that's what helps us take care of our citizens. None of the decisions that we've talked about or maybe that I'm gonna propose right now for tonight at 7 o'clock were taken lightly. And I'm sure that there are people out there, people in the community and employees that are gonna say, well, why didn't you do this, or you should have done that, you should have done this, should have done that, shouldn't have done that. But I can tell you a lot of time, effort, conversation, and prayers have been put into place. I would like to, for us to look at the second budget that we proposed when we were looking at the 6.5. We may not look at the whole second budget, there may be a couple of things in that second budget that we may not be looking at. And I'm talking to somebody in the back of the room now, there may not be everything in that second budget that we're looking at. We had one department that we were looking for seven more positions, and we might be looking at three instead of seven. I believe that's what we came out with. There's several things that I would like for us to do, and some of these have been talked about for quite a while, and some of them are kind of new. One of them's a salary study, hasn't been one since 1999. We want to put that in the budget, talk to the post commissioners. We feel like if we don't know where we're at, we can't have the direction of where we need to go, and don't know how we're gonna get there, so we need to do that. And I've heard that from department heads, I've heard it from employees, but I've heard it more from citizens, I'd like to put the salary study in there. We had something come up last week because of the budget, and I'm so thankful that we tabled the budget. Thank you guys for giving us an opportunity to do that, some of the other things came out. When we built Veterans Park out here, we put inside of that contract, the first three years of taking care of Veterans Park was kind of inside that contract of maintenance. And probably an oversight on a few of us, that contract's gonna be ending in a few months. And so I had an employee in the department head talk to me concerning that. And that's a beautiful park out there, represents our county well, well-used. And in order for us to facilitate taking care of that in-house, it's gonna at least cost us at least to get hired one more employee with benefits, and then equipment that we don't have, and then there's other things that you're gonna spend out there. So I'm asking to put that in, that contract in there for another year, to be able to take care of that park, so that we continue to get the compliments that we get from that park and the use that we get out of it. DOT department had a $50,000 item that they need, or need a piece of equipment that'll save us man-hours, and I think at this time, we need that piece of equipment, the sign machine, and so I've asked to put that back in. And that's also been talked about between all the post commissioners up here. Through the tough times in the economy, things were cut out from the employees when it came to buyback of their, of their personal lead time that they have. And we reinstated 40 hours last way, last year. And I consider that employees' time, it's their money. And I want to get to a certain point, and I've talked to all the post commissioners, and they would like to see us get to a certain point over the next year or two. We had, we put in there last year 40 hours, and I'd like to up that to 60 hours, buyback for the employees. We've talked to a lot of departments, water department, 911, which are separate departments, separate departments, and the fire department, which is a separate department from the, from what we do here on R M and O, as far as the county's concerns, all these departments. I'm talking about the buyback is for everyone. And so the next item that I'm talking about is for everyone, is for fire, sheriff department, 911, water, Paul County employees. And went over everything with department heads, one way or another, went over everything with Ms. Pollard, talked about it with the commissioners, and I'd like to propose a 3% pay raise across the board for all employees, all departments. Each department can afford that, we can do that. As a post-to-commissioner, as, I've talked to these guys, we've talked to employees, but I've talked to department heads that are running those departments. You go through different times in your life, and we're just at a different crossroads right now. I hope that'll be something positive for the employees. I want you to know there's been a lot of hard work and prayer and thought put into it, it's not taken lightly. Just like we tell our kids, we'd always like to do more, sometimes we just do what we can do. So I'd like to see that in, I kind of, when I talked about the second budget that we proposed when we were looking at 6.5, there were a couple of things in it that were kind of tweaked around, but we talked to the department heads and said, hey, if we have this, if we have that, what would you want? So there's a couple of departments where we get a combination of those items. Salary study, Veterans Park, sign machine, 3% raise, 60-hour buyback. I think that'll leave us with about $130,000 contingency left over. And that $130,000 contingency, not that we're looking to spend that, but I'm committed to the employees, to the taxpayers and citizens of this county, that we will look over and continue to work on the budget. After we approve and pass a budget tonight, we will continue to look at things for this year, the rest of this calendar year, for the rest of this budget, and going into next year, when we have a new chairman sitting up here. We've got some ideas, and we're gonna work together for the good of the employees, for the good of this county, for the good of everybody. Sometimes you, just a few years ago, a few of us were together, some friends, and we were talking about a situation that a family had with some medical needs. We were talking about, and we ended up praying for that family, and we got done, and I said, you know, we can pray, all we want to pray, but there's times where you gotta, don't take this comment wrong, you gotta put into motion what you know you need to do. So, we've got what we need to do to do this, this budget's doable. Our taxpayers deserve it, our employees deserve it, and we'll work hard together for the next year to see that we see this through, and that we see a successful budget next year that we can continue on moving forward. These guys know what I brought to you this morning. Tabitha, I'd like for you to get that together for us for tonight. And I thank you guys for your work. I thank the department heads and the employees for your input. I'm done. Anybody else wish to speak on the budget? I will say that Mr. Fowley, I did walk in my office two minutes before this meeting started to tell me what they were gonna do, so I can't say that I disagreed with any of it, but then I should have been included in this process, but again, I've got my ideas. New business, discuss action to adopt Resolution C. Oh, number two, discuss action 2016-01-TAA, application by Christine Reeves for a tax amendment to change the Pauling County zoning ordinance, Article 3, Section M2, B1, General Business District, to add as permitted, use auto broker office only with no vehicles on-site recommended for approval 501, this is tabled August 9, 2016, Board of Commissioners. Ann, I think you did some clarification for us during this, and just to...
Do you have a little bit more information about B1 properties? In Pauling County, we have a little over 200 properties, and there's probably a little over 400 buildings on those properties. Probably three-quarters or a quarter don't have any buildings on there unzoned, but that's some of the information I wanted to make you aware of, of how many properties are zoned B1 and how many buildings are available on those properties.
Any other discussion on number two? New business item number one, discuss action to adopt Resolution 16-38, approving the lease for the Georgia State Patrol post in Pauling County.
As you all know, we now have a Georgia State Patrol post that is on Millcreek Parkway. The state of Georgia renovated that building for about $415,000 that they spent, and we have now worked with the Attorney General's Office to produce the lease, where they're gonna lease the property from us, and they'll be responsible for all the utilities and other maintenance items out there, so the county will no longer be responsible for that. This lease has gone through the state properties commission, so they have looked at it and proved in form as well, as the Attorney General's Office, I've looked at it, I've put some additions, I'm happy with it as well, so I would recommend it to all, approve it tonight.
Any more discussion on this? That is the... That is the conclusion of our regular business session. We canceled the executive session. Public participation on non-... Mike Sudan, public meeting before.
Good morning, Ms. Skipper.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. I have a bad memory, so I need to read everything. My name is Mike Sudan, and it's the first time I've felt the need to address our Pauling County Commissioners in an open forum. I've weighed out a lot of my options, and I've thought about it for a long time before coming here today, to seek clarification of some comments made by Chairman Austin during the February Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you recall that meeting. It was the one that showed us Brett Smith's true character, passing out some money packages. Mr. Chairman, I've tried twice to speak with you privately about my concerns. Both times, you have refused to even listen to me, walking off twice. I told you then, that if you are not willing to speak privately, then I will bring it up in a public meeting. At the February meeting, my wife was speaking on the topic of propellers influence on Pauling County, and specifically regarding the infamous recall billboards. After staying strictly on topic, she finished, and as she was returning to her seat, you took it upon yourself, you verbally attacked my wife about something completely out of left field and completely off-topic, something about a social media comment. Mr. Chairman, you are supposed to be held to the same rules of meeting decorum as the citizens. For example, limiting comments to designated topic, not make inappropriate or offensive comments. And in your Code of Ethics, it says, "No county official should use his position to secure special privilege or exemptions for himself." Mr. Chairman, you verbally attacked my wife in an open forum, stating into the public record that, quote, "We don't need people like you in our county," unquote. Mr. Chairman, the clarifications I am seeking today are, number one, who were the "we" you mentioned when you said, "We don't need"? And number two, what did you mean when you said, quote, "We don't need like people like you"? Mr. Chairman, after you finished your personal off-topic tirade, you ordered my wife removed. Mr. Chairman, it was you who was out of order when you interjected your off-topic remarks about something personal, not even pertaining to the topic of propellers influence on Pauling County. The following meeting, in the next month, my wife tried to get an explanation from you regarding your prior month's personal attacks towards her. Mr. Chairman, your comments about my wife should not have been brought up in a public forum. If you didn't like something you read on social media, why didn't you have the nerve to tell it to us face-to-face? Your public outburst was a clear indication of your inability to perform your duties without getting angry. And I want to read the decorum of members, what they're responsible for. Members of the public shall not make inappropriate or offensive comments at a board meeting, and are expected to comply with the rules of decorum that are established for, for commissioners. Individuals who violate any rules of the board may be ruled out of the board. And in your Code of Ethics, the very first sentence, "Encourage high ethical standards in official conduct by county officials." And one more thing. The very first sentence in the Code of Ethics says, "Encourage high ethical standards in official conduct by county officials. Establish guidelines for ethical standards of conduct for all such officials by setting forth those acts or actions that are incompatible with the interests of the county." Do you need some more time to explain and clarify your comments to my wife?
No.
No, sir?
No.
No comment?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Sudan. Do you...
Thank you.
... Do you want to do a turn? Do the second, or do you second, discuss in all favor say?
Aye.